Call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There, it was already on. All right, thanks. I want to thank everyone for coming and also for any veterans out in the crowd, I want to thank you for your service. Before we have, I guess the first item on the agenda is recognition and fall athletics. So, see, Erin, we'll turn over to you and then you let us know who's going to be speaking and word order.
Okay. Thank you for having us tonight. It's always an exciting time of the year, you know, our first celebration recognition of the year with our fall athletics. I'm going to turn it over to three of our leaders within the school here in a second, but it's a busy time of the year. Some of them are coming right from their winter sports tryouts which started today and trying to recap their fall, but a lot of cumulative things happen in a season and monetary things such as wins and losses will appear, appear as an excess, as a success, but there are a lot of things that I don't even notice until we go through this that they'll present that really go beyond those monetary things. So, that's what I've been encouraging them to talk about tonight, share their experience and what went well, what was a challenge, what went, you know, as planned, what did not go as planned. So, I'm going to start with inviting Izzy, Morgan, and Quinn up there with the AMP group, who you're probably well aware with, but these three have volunteered tonight to make sure we're moving through and being the leaders of this recognition, so.
I'm Kunwen Koski.
I'm Izzy Hughes.
And I'm Morgan Miller.
Um, Izzy, would you like to start off telling them about AMP?
Yes, so we're members of the AMP group, which stands for Athletes Making Progress, and the goals of our group are to foster more school spirit without, throughout the high school, and we also work on individual projects to like foster school spirit. For example, the student versus staff football game at the end of the school year, it's a fun, it's to raise money for the senior scholarship, and we've been working on individual projects in our latest meetings.
So, one of the things we were working on is the Superfan app, and this is another way to support school spirit. So, it works, um, at every sports game, though, you can like check in on the app, and then there's like a certain amount of points for like each game, so let's say like the away games might be more points to get more people at away games, or like sports that have lower attendance will be worth higher points, and then by the end of the year, we'll total up the points and then like the top people will have prizes for attending.
Um, so, a while back, we spoke with the Rotary and actually received the grant. With that money, we did the Superfan AMP, and we also did the conference beams. So, in our school, when you walk past the award shelves, there's beams up ahead that shows the different sports teams, boys and girls, the accomplishments with earning all conference, which is a really big accomplishment, and we like to recognize that.
All right, being a student athlete, it can sometimes be difficult to balance school with sports, and so those are some of the names of the top GPAs, so we just like to recognize their dedication to school and sports.
Um, we also have brought in seven new coaches to the Raider family. We're excited to see what they can do as we take our sports very seriously, and we feel as though they can lead us to do our best and achieve great things. We also had multiple sports teams, go-to-state, tennis, golf, cross-country, boys and girls, and a great amount of people from girls swim and dive. And then leading into the sports teams, we would like to bring up Fall Cheer and Stunt.
So, I'm Taylor Jankowski.
I'm Izzy Hughes.
We're the Fall Cheer captains of Hudson Cheer and Stunt, and so far for our winter season, we've hosted a Western Wisconsin Cheer Clinic where we had Stevens Point Cove Down and worked with all of us to become better stunters and work with other schools to just raise our school spirit and team bonding. And then we also hosted a junior cheer camp where we got the younger kids of the elementary and middle school to come work with us and raise their school spirit for the Hudson Raiders.
Um, back in October, we raised over a thousand dollars for the American Cancer Society during our annual penny run where we'd go door-to-door collecting spare change. We also collected change at the Pink Out Football Game, and to wrap up our fall season, we just competed at the UCA Regional Competition in Edina, and we placed first in small co-ed varsity, and we received a bid to the National High School Cheerleading Championships in Orlando in February. So, that's it for us. Thank you.
Great.
I'm Mason Howard.
Dane Nemuth.
Toren Phillips.
Quinn Farr.
Um, this year, we sold the gold cards that we do every year, um, and we also, um, the, yeah, we had the Pigskin Picnic, which gets the community out to partake with us, and they can play a bunch of games. And I'm not sure what the money goes towards, I think it's probably the football program. Um, I'm not quite sure. And then during the halftime at, uh, was it the Chippewa game? All the boosters came out and they played during halftime, which was really fun for them, and then we gave them all high fives after, so that's always a fun one for them. Do you guys hear anything? Uh, we made it into playoffs, and we almost won. Uh, it was a really close one, it was a close game, but we didn't win. That's, that's it, that's all we got.
I'm Courtney Dummer.
And I'm Paige Hillman. Um, this past season, we had a lot of new members join our team, and compared to last year, we had 23, and this year, we had 14, which is really good to see. And for next season, we are looking forward to working hard and trying to qualify for state as a team.
Um, our lowest team score for nine holes was at Lake Wissota in Chippewa Falls, and we shot a 185, and three out of our five varsity players shot their personal best this year. Last year at conference, we placed fourth overall, and this year, we placed second overall. River Falls just edged us by a few matches.
We also had Paige, who went to state as an individual. She took 14th, which placed her in the third team all-state, and we also went to sectionals as a team.
Good. Nice. Great season.
Hi, I'm Haley Wilson.
I'm Olivia Tennant.
I'm Brooke Jackson.
I'm Lexi Sherman.
So, this year, we started out our season with performing at parades and other parades throughout the community, and we had practices up until then, and we also hosted a junior dance camp this year, and we also hosted a home camp for our dancers to team bond and learn, learn our dances for this upcoming season and learn some football dances, which Lexi will tell you about.
Um, then we moved ahead and did some football games to support our football team, and we do the halftime performance and also sidelines at the beginning of the game. We like to get the student section to be involved, so this year, we added a mascot in one of our dances to gain more school spirit, and we're also really excited to support the basketball, boys and girls, soon in their next upcoming season during their halftime performance.
Uh, this past weekend, we competed at our first competition of the season. It was at Wauwatosa West High School. It's our first time ever attending this competition, so we want to give a huge thank you to the athletic department for funding that. Uh, it was definitely worth it. We placed second in D1 Palm and first in D1 Jazz and Kick. We happened to beat the state champions from last year in Kick, so that's a nice preview to our season.
Um, we will be competing at multiple competitions throughout the state. We are excited to be having the WACPC Western Regionals here at HHS this year after a successful conference last year. After regionals, we are hoping to qualify for state, and then we are super excited to be attending the Contest of Champions in Orlando, Florida for Nationals.
Thank you.
All right, I'm Reagan Seko, one of the captains, and although our season is not done, we want to first begin by saying that we are co-conference champs for this season, and in the past four years, we have not lost a dual meet.
Um, I'm Mari Elliott, another swim captain. I also want to say that we won sectionals this past weekend, and at that meet, we had 100% PRs, so everyone did their personal best at that meet.
Um, we currently have one diver and eight swimmers attending state this weekend. Um, we are currently practicing really, really hard, we just came from practice, and we're super excited because some of our relays are placed the best that we've ever had. Um, and we also have two swimmers swimming individually, myself in the 100 breaststroke and 200 IM, where I am ranked third and seventh respectively, as well as Faith Alitson, who is also doing 100 breaststroke where she is ranked 12th. So, we're super excited to see where the season will take us with our taper and all of our hard work with Raider Elite, as well as classroom sessions where we have really focused on our mentality and where our mental strength can takes, can take us in races. So, yes, thank you for your time.
Okay, we're going to be talking about girls tennis. So, girls tennis has become more and more popular, and this year, there was definitely really high numbers. We had a full varsity, JV, and developing team, so there's definitely a lot of depth there. As for varsity, we finished 19, 4-0, and we placed second in the conference behind our rivals, Oakley Memorial. And for the three tournaments that we participated in, we won all of them.
Um, a few of our great achievements was the team finished as sectional runner, runner-up. We had three individuals qualify for state, Morgan and I and Ella, who is the other captain, who couldn't be here tonight. We had multiple athletes receive academic all-conference and first and second team all-conference, which is truly a great achievement. And, uh, the experience at state, I think I can speak for both of us, was one that we will never forget, so I hope we can send some, some of the younger girls in the developmental team and the JV team down to Madison.
Um, I'm one of the captains, Caitlin Zignago.
I'm Sarah Hoffman.
And I'm Elizabeth Collinson. So, a little bit about our team is that we had 15 players this year. We had a lot of people come out for volleyball, and we had 13 seniors and two juniors, so it was a nice last hurrah for us as seniors.
Um, this year, we're 21 and 8 in overall, and 5 and 1 in conference, so we took second. And we are actually regional champs this year, which we haven't done since 2007.
In regards to personal achievements, we had three players on our team receive second team all-conference, and we also had one honorable mention. Thank you.
I'm Tony Weeks.
I'm Dylan Hay.
So, a little bit about our team in the summer, before the season starts, we do some volunteer work in some races like the half marathon, the gopher, the badger. We help out at each mile stop and hand out water and stuff like that. We do that every summer. Our team gets together and we make the Gatorade before, show up early, and hand out the water during the race.
Uh, we had a pretty good season this year, um, taking, uh, we tied for second at conference and had sent Tony and Noah to, um, Chautauqua Rapids for state meet. Otherwise, across the board, JV and varsity, um, really big improvements in everyone, and as a senior captain, it was cool to see some of the younger guys, um, get involved in the meets and in practices, showing effort and, uh, seeing development throughout the season. So, yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Anna Saprina.
And I'm Alicia Belaney.
Um, so to start off our season, we had 21 girls go out for cross-country this season, and seven of us were seniors. Um, we got really close with our team this year and did lots of team bonding activities, so that was really fun. And talking about our season, we had nine meets plus sectionals in state, so 11 meets total, and we did very well at the like first nine meets, and then at conference, we got second to Menominee, and at sectionals, you need top two to qualify for state, and we got third by seven points, so we were really close. We didn't qualify as a team, but we sent Alicia Belaney here and Rachel Ball to state as individuals.
So, at state, there's 190 runners in our race. Rachel placed 27th and I placed 57th, and so that was a really big accomplishment for the both of us. And another thing we did this year was we've gone to the middle school to connect with the girls cross-country team there to create better bonds between, between both of our teams and get them more interested to come out, um, for cross-country in high school, so then we get a larger team with more numbers and more girls that want to enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you want to just go to the top, there's a, right there. We had two, Courtney Dummer and Paige Hillman, who are here with us tonight. Girls golf finishes up a lot earlier than a lot, the other fall sports, so I'm, I'm sure we will have more that would add to this list, but academic all-state is another thing that's recognized, along with our top GPA. In order to make this achievement, you have to have at least a 3.25 GPA and have competed in 75% of your varsity matches, so, um, huge congratulations to those two and that dedication that it takes to be able to pull that off. One thing that did not make it on this list is our national letter of intent signing day is this Wednesday for all sports other than football. I think football thinks they're too important, so they sign on December 18th, but we have a total of seven, seven athletes right now that are committed to Division One or Two and are going to be signing a national letter of intent. That is a record, and I know there are others that are looking to sign as well, they're just not ready to make that decision right now. So, we do have another date in May where we'll have all athletes that are going to be competing at the next level. I'm sure that will also break a record in just knowing early conversations of our, our students that are looking to do that and, and make that leap, so, um, any questions for the group?
Erin, that national signing day, it's this Wednesday, is that all sports or just fall sports?
It is all sports.
All sports, okay.
Yep.
Any other comments from board members, Rob?
Yeah. So, was AMP involved with the homecoming dance?
Dance and carnival.
And everything else. And I just, kudos to everybody that participated in that. It was great to see homecoming the way it was, just night and day compared to what it's been over the last number of years, so, uh, well done. Hopefully, every, everybody had a good time, and hopefully, we continue that, that tradition. You guys, and I say this all the time, you know, you focus on your academics, you focus on your athletics, you do a lot of great stuff in the community, thanks for being leaders, you know, with your peers, it's absolutely fantastic. And the last thing, Mr. Krupa, is this, is this season 51 for you?
Yes, it is.
Congratulations. Many more, hopefully. And anyway, thanks to everybody and congratulations on a great fall.
Mr. President, I just want to say that I admire frequent comments of how you're mentoring underclassmen and middle school and so on and keeping, it helps to find people that will continue in, in our athletic program. I think that's great, and good luck to the swim and dive team this weekend.
Excellent. Any other comments from board members? But I just want to thank everyone for coming and for representing our schools and for competing hard, and I also have to comment, I like the appreciation for the academic part and how much emphasis is put on that. And I also note that AMP is doing a great job. I was part of that Rotary group that you had the presentation, and you got a grant, and hopefully, continue to increase that school participation. Happens to be a school district goal is to increase the percentage of kids in extracurricular activities, and so that means more than just sports, but we thank you for your participation and continue to pass that on for the younger students, all right? Thank you again.
Okay. We'll give us, uh, give everybody 10 seconds to clear the room here.
Always before I speak.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, no, I don't.
I will note as the room is clearing that it's not the superintendent who's next to speak, but we do, we do have two citizens request to speak about non-action items, and, uh, I don't know if there's a particular order, but I have Maria Rudy and Tammy Muthaden? Muthaden? I don't know, how do you, who wants to go first? All right, looks like Tammy's first. Sorry about rescuing your last name there.
Okay. Hello, um, so my name's Tammy Muthaden. I live in Hudson, I have a son who graduated just this past year, and I have a freshman in high school. So, I came before the board about a year ago to express my concern about the early start times for our middle and high school students, in particular, in relation to lack of sleep that our students are getting, and I really came as a concerned mom. I spent four years, my son's high school years, of really hounding him to get in bed early and very concerned about the fact that he usually would get to bed closer to midnight and be getting up, struggling to get up at 6:00, 6:30, um, oftentimes with just, you know, no breakfast, running out the door to get to school. And I think a common misconception is that kids are, this is a problem because kids are on their devices and, and not going to bed because they're playing video games or doing social media. And what I learned and why I come to the school board is that, what I've learned is that really there's biological reasons why kids are not able to get to bed early and why it is that these early school start times are negatively affecting our students. And the more and more I researched it, the more I felt like I just had to, to, to make the request that the school board look at what we can do as a community for our students to help with this problem. And over the past year, it really has been even more than just being a concerned mom in that I really see the issues as being a public health issue. The statistics are out there, the data is out there, it's been there for a long time. Students who, who get less than the recommended amount of sleep, which is, I think it's eight to nine hours, and typical high school students are getting around six hours, middle school students as well, when kids are not getting the recommended amount of sleep, they engage in riskier behavior more often. There is higher incidence of suicide attempts and suicide. Um, you know, this is a public health issue, this is beyond just, I'm concerned for my son. And I am, I have a freshman, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about the vaping, I'm concerned about tobacco abuse, I'm concerned about anxiety and mental health, I'm concerned about suicide. Um, you know, these are real serious issues, and that's why I'm here tonight. I appreciate we met with the superintendent to further discuss my concerns, our concerns, because there's others who are concerned as well, and I appreciate that. And my understanding is that there is a committee that's being formed to look at this, and I appreciate that. But I'm here tonight to say, um, there is urgency to this issue. There really is. Kids' well-being, their health, their, their safety, our community's safety, there is an urgency to this, so I just really want you to, to know that. And, and again, the data has been around for a long time. Every week, I hear a new story on NPR or in the news about how, how important it is that not just kids, all of us get sleep. It's just becoming, the data is, is out there, so I encourage you all to really look at that. I am a county supervisor as well, and I'm on the Health and Human Services Committee for St. Croix County, and recently, at a meeting, I was able to bring up this concern because we happen to have a presentation on vaping and tobacco use and some risky behavior with teens. And I brought this up to our public health department as a concern, and they are very interested and they're looking at it, but ultimately, it is going to be your decision. So, again, I just implore you to, to really understand the seriousness of the issue, the public health issue, and the urgency, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Maria?
So, thank you again for the opportunity to speak this evening. As Tammy said, myself and others, Tammy included, we've been, um, looking at school board meetings and agendas and district communications since our March meeting with Superintendent Olet. Can you hear me better? Thanks. Um, that was nearly nine months ago, and we really appreciated the opportunity to meet with, with Nick and Tracy and talk about a community conversation regarding school start times. During that meeting, we shared our concern that back in the fall of 2016, there was a district survey where the question was asked of the community and of parents if they wanted the district to explore this issue. 76% said yes, and now, here we are, fall of 2019, and there hasn't been any public communication or public forward action on this issue. So, we're now three years out from the point of when you first asked the question, and that's concerning. We were thrilled to see the draft communication and engagement plan that was reviewed at the August 26th board meeting and during the working session. And I, I know Dr. Olet gave a brief verbal update during the October 14th meeting, but since then, there's been no additional communication, public facing, about what the plans are or intent around this community engagement process. And the draft plan that was presented at that August 26th meeting is still a draft form that has not been updated since it was posted. This gives in total an appearance that the school start times discussion is being delayed, and that may or may not be true, but that appearance is out there. And we are asking for a more public-facing communications on the district's intents with regards to this issue. Answering, for example, is the draft engagement plan still in need of board approval or not? Does it have board approval? If it does have board approval, what is the intent for finalizing the plan and the next steps for when the community can expect to see outreach and engagement begin to happen? Providing the community with this clear and direct communication from the district can really help improve the trust that the community will have as this process moves forward. And finally, I, I feel like when we hear the stories about the research on sleep and we hear stories more and more of school districts across the nation that are adopting and addressing this, it becomes very clear, we're falling behind. We are not leading on this issue, where we lead in many others, we are falling behind. And I find it interesting that And I find it interesting that we as a community, the board and the administration, we look at data with regards to academic outcomes on a regular basis and we assess our curriculum to make sure that our curriculum are evidence-based and evidence-informed so that we are achieving the academic outcomes that we are seeking and we would like for our children. The research and the evidence is out there around sleep. You have an opportunity to use that to make an evidence-based, evidence-informed decision around a policy that sets the structures and the systems for our children in their academic careers so that they can all succeed, so that we can better serve them. So thank you and...
All right. Thank you very much for your comments. Moving on now to superintendent reports, update on facility committee.
Yeah, just a quick update on the facility committee. The first part of the RFQ process has gone out. I want to thank Rob for sending me an example of an RFQ for commissioning or, not commissioning, Rob, what's it called, the district audit? So working through that process and he also sent me some names, some additional firms. So we're working on getting that put together and going out. Essentially, the RFQs are due on the 18th of November. Kind of the plan of attack with this would be then to take the RFQs, they went out, I think, to about 15 different firms. Would be then to kind of narrow that down, maybe administration would narrow down the qualified firms down and then we would have the RFP process, which, let's say we narrow it down to three or four individual firms. Then at the board, potentially the board work session in December, the board would interview those three or four firms. They would bring with them their RFP to that interview to be able to kind of, what would their, what would their process look like, what would it cost and things along those lines for the facility committee and the work with the community engagement component of it. That was, that's kind of the thought price, process behind it and we can have some additional We can, however you guys want to do it, if you have questions about that, but we're, we're kind of moving along. And then like I said, I'm still working to try to finalize the draft of the RFQ for the, actually I think what Rob sent me was a copy of an RFP for, for the Commissioned Services and I think we would skip the RFQ process and go to the RFP process with them because I think it's probably, doesn't need to be quite of a two-step, two-step approach for those. So trying to get that information out and ready to go. I think to get a more in-depth conversation about this at our November 25th work session, also having Jim Staschall here, our Director of Buildings and Ground, to be able to answer questions about process and direction and kind of some of his take on things. He's been in the district about 25 years. He has a pretty good handle on things and be able to kind of give you guys kind of his take on these things. But I just wanted to give you at least a little bit of a heads up as to kind of where we are in the process. The other thing I wanted to touch base on, we did take a team, parts of the cabinet and principal team do Studer training to really look at our, continue to build on, on what we're doing with Studer and it had to do with continuous improvement and employee engagement and what are some of the things that we can do and learn from other school districts and also other entities, nonprofit entities, as to what they're doing to engage employees, what they're doing to kind of actionable items, you know, to continue to, you know, to build momentum around employee engagement. And so one of the things that we're planning on doing and we're working with Studer is at the work session, the November work session will be rolling out the staff engagement survey results with the board and kind of going through that. But then also we've been working with Studer is how do we roll out the staff engagement survey results at the buildings levels and then create some actionable plans from those, the staff engagement surveys, you know, that, you know, people can see. And so it was, it was a great training, really, it was a quick, just, you know, day and a half, two days of training, so it wasn't like it was a week-long training or anything like that. But continue to look forward to working with Studer. They're going to be in the district on Monday, all day, working with, working with the district-wide leadership team, trying to unpack some things from the focus groups that we had, but also kind of doing this kind of side-by-side analysis between our HSD 2025 and what they're hearing from focus groups to start to kind of merge and, and try to work through some of those things. But then also working with our leadership teams on some different activities, like I said, to roll out our, our strategic, or I'm sorry, our engagement results and things along those lines. So Gail will be in the district all day on, on Monday next week, working, working with our, our leadership to really try to hone some of those things. So continuing to move forward and again, the name of the game is continuous improvement and, and really it comes on the, on the end of employee engagement. We have started the process, it's called rounding. I think I've talked to you guys about this a little bit before, but really working to be intentional about getting feedback, not just from our employee engagement surveys, but, but also having those conversations with employees and what that looks like. You know, as we continue to work through the strategic planning piece, as we continue to work through, you know, the goals and, and work with the board on setting these things, and I think Gail went, if you remember, Gail kind of went through that timeline, you know, really excited then, you know, to be working on our, our actionable plans, not only as it relates to our employee engagement, but also in our student achievement and learning goals and things like that. So that's kind of where we're at with Studer training. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Well, I wish I had, had a question, but I just want to say that for me, hearing you say that, you know, supporting the idea that Jim Staschall is an important part of this process is really meaningful to me. So I am so glad to hear that he's going to be at our, at our work session because the man can probably see through walls and tell you what kind of pipes are on the other side. And, you know, we could go pay a lot of money to have somebody tell us some of the stuff that he knows because I'm, I'm sure in managing our facility, he has a pretty good timeline in his mind about when things are going to need to be replaced or, you know, put on some kind of list of consideration for, you know, being budget anticipation and so on. And I think Mr. Tim Erickson can tell us a few things too. So, yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to having his input.
Mr. President?
That's Rob.
And so for the audience's benefit, Studer, when they came and collected the, the voices from those focus groups, it was teacher, staff, students, community members?
Teacher, staff, students, community members, parents. I think there was 155 total stakeholders that came in in a variety of groups over two different days.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
Yep.
And so will there be a summary of common themes that we'll get as a board or?
Yep. And so that's kind of one of the things that we'll be able to kind of work through with the board. Here are the themes that came through with the, with the focus groups. That's part of what we're going to be unpacking also on Monday with the leadership team, you know, what were the themes from the focus groups and how does that compare to kind of our existing strategic plan, which is HSD 2025? Absolutely.
So we'll be dealing with that in more detail in the work session?
Yeah, as we, as we move forward.
All right. Any other comments on either the facility committee update or Studer training, which is related to the strategic planning that's going on, all right? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports. We've been getting a series of curriculum updates and today is on secondary math.
Thank you. Yes, tonight's update is on secondary math and with us this evening is Mary Beth Elliott, curriculum specialist and instructional coach at the middle school. And just, I want to say publicly again, kudos to Mary Beth. She does an outstanding job in her role and a lot of the work she'll present tonight, both describing what's going on at the middle school and the high school, talks about the intense work they've done the past three years with making sure that we had prioritized standards, aligned assessments, and then making that resource decision. So, Mary Beth, give us an update.
Thanks, Sandy. This year is in our, we're in our fourth year in the curriculum review process and it happens to coincide with phase four, which is really focused on monitoring program effectiveness and analyzing our data. And when we're monitoring that program effectiveness, we're really looking at common assessments that are happening at grade level, our external assessments, which I'll talk about, and then instructional, making instructional changes and adjusting professional development based on the needs and feedback of our teacher leaders. Our current resources that we use are CPM, it's College Preparatory Math or Core Connections at the middle school and McGraw-Hill for our Algebra I, Algebra II and Geometry courses. And then Pearson is the resource we use into the upper level, the AP courses. All of our math classrooms have a text, a classroom hard copy set of texts available to students, as well as they're available in the Resource Center to be checked out. In addition to that, there is a digital version of the text online and they offer a lot of really cool clickable links right within the text, which is great for homework help. And then there's other online instructional components to our digital piece. This year we added the single sign-on with Google and that was seamless with some vendors. We had some, some little snafus with others, but everything was worked out and everyone has signed on. The shifts that we made, the shifts that have been made in the math, through the curriculum review process is really focused on increasing student collaboration, building procedural fluency from the conceptual understanding. Mixed-based practice is comparable to when elementary talks about the spiraling curriculum where skills are no longer isolated. There's not a multiplication or a division or a fraction unit. Students keep seeing that coming back around all year long. And then we're continuing to really revise and hone in on our common assessments throughout all six, 12 grade levels. We've spent a lot of time focusing on our communication, not only at our building levels, but at our overall math department. What you see on the lower left corner is a math resource block that's located on the Raider Portal. That's updated weekly with CPM parent information. Those are tips that are for parents that come directly from CPM, as well as we had a math parent night and the slides are available there, there's homework help. And then the parent guides, course one and two kind of offer, and we have a course three also, that offers additional practice for parents to help students that might be struggling. In addition to that, we have of course the beginning of the year syllabuses that are given out in all math classes, a student planner digitally. And then high school is used, is using the Raider, or not the Raider Portal, I'm sorry, their Google Classroom for every math class. We're continuing to support our teachers from teaching and learning side. We have had four days, or we have one, no, we have four days of CPM training, so they came back and continue to work with the middle school math teachers, as well as they have a math coach that comes to our building and works with every math teacher for two hours. Last year they did four hours. And then McGraw-Hill and Pearson are offering additional training as well for our high school folks. The measurements that we continue to use are external data pieces, the ACT Aspire, the ACT Forward and MAP. And in addition, this year we're implementing interim assessments or benchmark assessments that are occurring three or four times throughout the school year, as well as our regular unit or classroom test that students are having. And then scaffold assessments we work on through our PLC process that gets to kind of the quizzes and kind of mid-assessment points before a unit test.
So I'm going to take the next couple of slides when we talk about the results that we've seen. As we look at these results, you're going to see that they're not as strong as the elementary results we saw the last time we had an update. And I'm going to share not only the results, but a few things that we have going to, to improve these results. I'm going to reiterate what Sandy opened with. Mary Beth does an amazing job of empowering teachers and the level of commitment that teachers have to reverse these trends and make sure they go in the right, right direction is impressive. I was able to sit in on a training just the other day with the middle school team and the level of commitment and ownership that that middle school math team has is very, very impressive and, and they're very dedicated to making sure we have things trend in the right direction. So this first slide looks at FORWARD, which is the measure we use elementary through middle school. So this is a aggregate results of sixth through eighth grade over the last four years. You can see it was trending up with a little dip in the most recent year. Again, sixth through eighth grade. So when you look at the scorecard, you might notice that those numbers don't exactly match and that's because the scorecard measure is just eighth grade. So make sure if you're comparing between those two measures that we're paying attention to the specific grades that we're looking at. And again, to point out, we're always, just as a point of comparison, we've got the blue bar, that dark navy bar is Hudson and then the gray bar, the state comparison overall for the same age range. The next band would include ninth and 10th graders. This is the ACT Aspire, again, looking at the total percentage of students who were in the proficient or advanced level. You can see this is trending in a negative direction, so we're working hard to change that. When I'm done with this next slide, I'll explain some of the things, the concrete actions we're taking to do that. And then finally, we have, the next slide is looking at the ACT, I'm sorry, I've got one, one in there first. Oh, no, I don't, I'm sorry. We're going right to ACT. So that's the ACT average score. For ACT, we don't have the same measure of the percentage of kids that are proficient and advanced, we're looking at the isolated math ACT score. Again, you can see it was very consistent in that 22.3. Obviously, we'd like to see that go up. Unfortunately, it took a dip for us next year. A couple of the things that we're doing to address this, one is realigning some of our resources to ensure that we have the proper level of support and attention on our four core areas. Right now, quite honestly, our curriculum specialists are a little too spread thin to focus on all of the different content areas. So what ends up happening is where the, the teachers are very well-supported during the initial phases of the curriculum process, but we can't keep up that level of support because we need to flip to the next content area. So isolating support for those content areas in a way that actually does not reduce the support for our elective areas, but instead just share some responsibilities with some different folks. The other thing, and Mary Beth mentioned this, is measuring our progress in shorter cycles. One of the things that we cannot do is just wait for the end of the year for our ACT results, our FORWARD results. So the interim assessments that Mary Beth has mentioned, and not only mentioned, but actually spent an incredible amount of time creating, is that's what allows us to look in short cycles by unit or by chunk of instruction to make immediate adjustments if we need to change something or we need to bolster something. We also use that data then to make curricular adjustments if we're finding like a certain area. Let's say it's, we're seeing that data chance and probability is slipping, then we can address that in a more immediate sense. And I'll pass it back to Mary Beth.
Thanks, Dave. As Dave kind of mentioned, our key lessons for teaching and learning have really been the success of the math curriculum improvement process really hinges on that leadership of math teachers and the math teachers owning it. They've been, they're keeping their focus on clear and consistent transition between grades and buildings. The overall grounded success of the curriculum is based on the students' math confidence and that's something that that math team has really tried to focus on is building that math confidence as they move between not only courses, but then into the future and their post-secondary choices that they make. And that's all I have.
Any questions, comments?
Any questions from board members on the math curriculum development?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we move on to action items on the agenda. First up is consent. Agenda, I look for a motion with the language regarding expenditures.
Mr. President, I move approval of the consent items and that the Chief Financial and Operations Officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $3,010,639.75.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So Kerry got in there, so I'll give the second to Kerry. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes? And Andrea, do we have, we, I see we have some substantial years of retirement.
We do. So it's that time of year, so we have some upcoming retirements that are being announced tonight. First up is Joan Carter, FIAD teacher at AP Rock, 30 years of service in Hudson. Pam Wonrow, speech and language pathologist at Rivercrest, 33 years of service. Linda Jacobs, a guidance counselor at Rivercrest, 22 years of service. And Michael Yell, middle school social studies, 31 years. So hit some big numbers tonight and I'm sure we'll have more at our next meeting, but we'll be recognizing them more at the recognition thing with the spring.
Very good. I want to thank them for their service and hope that they continue through the finish line in, in May, but thank, thank them for all their service and announcing that date they've probably been looking forward to for a while. All right. Market-based stipends are up next for our action items.
Yes, and so we had talked at the work session, I think a couple of work sessions, about switching gears a little bit and having the recommendation instead of an annually determined, board-determined amount for market-based stipends as part of our TSS 2.0 system, having an allotment defined for administration to then dispense it, so it's not, so it's a little bit more variable as we're going forward so that we can be more responsive in terms of the market. And then having essentially, again, an amount that
And then, uh, having essentially, again, an amount that we can depend or dictate based on, on a yearly basis of what our needs are in particular areas. So, the idea tonight would be having it be approved, um, for that general format. This year, um, we're looking, um, for the, based on our calculations, approximately, I believe, between a hundred and fifteen and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, allocated for the market-based stipends. And so, that includes all the different components there.
Okay. Are we looking for a motion then?
A motion to prove the, um, delegating the discretion to administration to disperse the amounts of the market-based stipends.
And you want the dollar amount stated in the motion?
I don't think the dollar amount is necessary because it would be great to be able to have some fluctuation as like a percent increase, annual increase for the overall compensation package, have that increase each year so that we, again, can continue to use that, um, pool of money to attract and really retain because the stipends continue year after year for those hard-to-fill positions.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll make the motion then. Um, I move, uh, that we approve the market-based, uh, stipends, um, be, um, managed and appropriated, um, by, uh, administration for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there a discussion, questions?
Ms. President?
Carrie?
Sorry. Point of clarification, I think we confirmed this at work session, but this is within the already board-approved budgeted parameters of the nineteen twenty budget.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, thank you for that point of clarification, Heather. Carrie, did you have a question?
Uh, yes. Uh, when we did discuss this, was, was the amount we were thinking about around eighty-five or ninety thousand?
Our last year allotment for market-based stipends was a hundred and three thousand.
Hundred and three, okay.
Yep. And so, um, looking at, we haven't like, for example, increased the cap, uh, for the last five years for, um, because we had a cap of seventy thousand. So, we'd like to move that up, for example, up to seventy-five thousand. That hits a lot more staff members, um, in terms of eligibility. So, that's why we have a bigger increase going into that when we apply the numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you for explaining that, um, you know, reason for the increase, but we're looking at a range. You set up one fifteen to one twenty and...
Right.
That would be roughly somewhere between ten and twelve percent more than last year.
Definitely. And we, um, other tweaks we're looking at making too is to eliminate the caps for the most hard-to-fill position. So, like our center-based program or deaf heart of hearing, our, um, CID severe programs where we're lucky sometimes to get an applicant, we want to make sure that we retain the ones we have.
Okay. So, everyone clear on the motion and the intent? This is something that has been introduced, uh, well, for several years, but gradually growing and, um, increasing need with the shortage of teachers in certain areas and we're not the only district experiencing this with...
No.
Act Ten, um, you know, in the wake of Act Ten.
It's a really good point because I was surprised when I was analyzing the comparable data in the Minnesota schools, how many Minnesota schools now have specific memorandum of, of understanding that provide for similar market-based type of stipends. So, that was surprising. Even in a collective bargaining, bargaining, um, situation, they still are finding ways to attract and retain some of their most difficult-to-fill positions.
All right. Well, uh, with that explanation, is there any other questions? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Next up is the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one calendar, school calendar year.
Yes, and that is literally the hardest school year to say, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. It's very redundant. So, the calendar you're looking at is the same calendar that you saw, uh, the last time at the last work session. The only difference, a few things that you asked for was to, um, call out the two dates, the ACT dates on March ninth and March twenty-third and make sure that those are visible for the community to see. And one of the things we had talked about was reaching out to Hudson Safe and the, and specifically the committee that looks at the senior all-night party to talk about the graduation date. That's where most of our conversations surrounded that graduation date. So, I, uh, called John Arthur, president of Hudson Safe and the co-chair of the senior all-night party and talked about the graduation date. He was very appreciative of the fact that we reached out. Um, his sense was keep the graduation date where it is. He gave a couple of reasons. One, weekdays or Fridays, he was very concerned that they would not be able to recruit the volunteers to staff the all-night party if we moved to a weekday or Friday. And then, if we moved it later, he was concerned that would be a problem for participation, obviously. And then moving it earlier, it would be an issue if it's not the last day of their school when they actually graduate. So, he felt that, um, given the way the calendar worked, that that date made the most sense. And, uh, again, he was appreciative of the fact that we reached out. With that, we're looking for, um, approval of the calendar tonight so we can get this out to the community.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the calendar for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, uh, with the caveat that there is no aubergine color in here. But otherwise, I move that we accept the...
Got you covered.
Approve the calendar. Second.
Second.
All right. I'm going to give that one to Heather. I think she was first. But thank you, Sue, for the motion. And as Dave pointed out, uh, only slight changes were made, uh, to the calendar, but this is all run through teachers as well as the Hudson Safe Committee, correct?
Yes, that's right. We have a, we have a calendar committee that's been working on the calendar for quite a few years and they're very helpful.
And what we've tried to do, um, now that we're beyond the construction at the secondary level was to provide this heads-up to our parents and community, um, approximately, you know, a, a year in advance. I know that everyone hones in on that spring break, so we're looking at March of twenty twenty-one and, um, the explanation of the week that we pick and so forth and, but appreciate all the work. I know that it generates probably some of the most discussion that we have, um, which is kind of surprising with a school industry that has a seventy-million-dollar budget and we talk more about the school calendar. But anyway, um, is there any other comments or questions regarding the proposed calendar?
Mr. President?
Yes?
I just want to echo the appreciation. I know that, um, the administrative team gets a lot of feedback and it's different feedback about things that families would like to see in the calendar. Um, you did some outside-the-box thinking and I think, um, folks are going to be generally pleased, especially around the, uh, last day of school. I know we hear from a lot of families about the, the late last day of school, students who are looking for work, who are heading off. So, just thank you. I know you're balancing a lot of feedback and appreciate your work on this.
Yeah, I think that part of that, um, that appreciation is in the context of, you know, Madison dictating when we can start. And when we got that one-year waiver because of construction, it gave us some flexibility, but yet we had one really long summer, one really short summer. And now that we're back to normal, we're, um, it's a challenge to try and get it done by Labor, by Memorial Day when we can't start before September first. But anyway, all those in favor of the motion of approving the school calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Next up, we have selection of delegate and our alternate delegate for the state convention, which is coming up, uh, January twenty-first. The convention delegate would actually be, uh, in session, that's, that on Wednesday is the assembly. And then, of course, the rest of the, uh, state conference and convention is, you know, also learning sessions and so forth. But, um, I would open the floor to nominations.
Ms. President?
Yes, Rob?
I'll, uh, self-nominate unless somebody else wants it.
All right? Is there anyone else jumping at the...
As, as much as I enjoyed last year, and it was very interesting, I will...
You can have it.
No, no.
And I guess...
I'll be an alternate.
You, you are willing to be the alternate, Bob?
I certainly will.
All right. Good. Because if no one was willing to take it, I was going to be willing to take it since we do have a resolution this year and, and I'd be willing to present it, but I think that's the job of the delegate. So, um, I think our slate of calen, candidates is Rob as delegate and, uh, Bob as, um, alternate delegate.
If you really want to forward that.
No, I'm just, it, it's going to be, you know, somebody that's willing to stand up and defend our resolution in front and explain it to the rest of the congregation, uh, the convention, that they're willing to do that, that's fine.